So today, we're gonna just follow up with the five-year financial plan. Getting into, we took, you know, we talked yesterday about $150 million worth of expenditures that the COTG identified, and we whittled that down to a manageable 40 or 20 million. And just as a, when I roll this out, this is a starting point. I'm not saying that this is the, I'll hold on to say what the ultimate five-year plan is for capital, what the priority is in terms of the years that these things will take place or not take place. So this is what I've thrown out as a starting point. But before we dive into that, just to recap from yesterday, and some of the direction that we needed from the board, and some of what we got, we heard, and if you correct me if I'm wrong, is make sure we're all on the same page here. So, the, is the camera on?
I'm not sure if it looks like it.
Yeah, red light's on.
Okay. All right, so we talked about the need to do a community survey, and since what I heard over the two years, not election years, we would do a community survey. And the way that would work is, I think the board would ultimately approve what that survey looks like, we would engage a consultant in helping us develop and administer that. Any comments, disagreement on that one? Okay. Wendy did a presentation on a personnel policy, and the concept or the direction was, we're gonna come back at a workshop and tackle the personnel policy and the board commissioners and managers protocols on how we're gonna work together. We talked about that a lot yesterday, and establishing the policy that we want, and how we're gonna work together moving forward and accomplishing the board's goals. Any disagreement, or y'all stop me. We had a good conversation yesterday, so if you disagree, or talk wrong on any, just let me know. So those were, those are the three most significant things that came out of the morning. Then we rolled into the afternoon. Well, and, back up. So Jim Prosser did a lot of work on decision-making, and the decision-making model that he recommended. So are y'all comfortable with what you heard in terms of the process that he laid out as far as a decision-making model? Then we, in addition to that, as a precursor to that, he talked about the need to assess, plan, and then implement. And I think oftentimes, we do, we jump right into the plan and then, you know, talk about implementation, but we forget the assess part of the equation. So that was the preface to his conversation about the whole decision-making model that he went through. Any comments about that? Okay. When we rolled into the afternoon, we talked, Dennis hit, you know, hard and heavy on infrastructure, stormwater, erosion, and sedimentation control programs, and broadly, the need for an engineering division. And there's Dennis right there. So unless there's any objection, what you're gonna see, one of the things that you will see recommended in the upcoming year's budget is an engineering division. So we're gonna start creating that division under the development services department. So within development and the services, you're gonna have Main Street program, building inspections, planning, and engineering. So you would have four divisions within development services managing those activities. Is that, okay. Because one of the, one of the statutory requirements of the board is to organize or approve the organization of the organization. So that would be something that we'll be in the, in the upcoming year's budget. And of course, the board, as a precursor to that, or really putting us in a position to establish that division, the board had previously approved the hiring of an assistant town engineer to really start, jump-starting that, if you recall. Anybody, any comments?
You got that ball rolling already?
Yeah, yes. We've got interviews.
Friday.
Friday with.
Three.
We've got three really good candidates, so we're hoping it goes really well there. So that was, and Dennis, you wanna talk a little bit about the direction, you know, that we need related to, you know, obviously, we're gonna have to put in an infrastructure management system, and that will come forward in the form of...
So in the form of...
As far as from the board, from the board's approval process, what they're gonna see related to that item for staff?
So I think, I think what the board, what you all will see are kind of a high-level overview of what it is after a certain level of prioritization has been placed on, on what infrastructure needs addressing first. I think you would see a certain level of prioritization, and maybe even a recommendation around, here's a path that staffs recommend we walk down in terms of getting some of our infrastructure, existing infrastructure that needs a little bit of help addressed first. And so I think you would see it in the form of a recommendation that looks like that. And then, obviously, you would have the opportunity to look into those priorities and see if the, what staffs recommend aligns with what you as a board recommend.
As far as the program itself moving forward, you know, we talked about what other jurisdictions do about holding the CO. So that whole process of, of all the way from the design, standard specifications, to the inspection, to the, so that side of it.
So I would describe that as, again, kind of permitting framework, where it is, you know, we have it in, currently, we have a permitting framework. There are several links within that chain that need some scrubbing. If you remember, a graphic that I showed you yesterday, that was a big arrow that had kind of little boxes, black and red letters on them. That's the same permitting framework, but you would see, I would say, more robust requirements, rules, design criteria, and standards in each one of those different boxes.
So that's the most critical, and in, and we talked a little bit yesterday about the timetable of at least getting a basic program set up and running, and you're saying 90...
So we're talking, we're talking multiple things. So construction inspection is, I don't wanna say that it's independent, but it's a specific program area of work that supports the permitting process. So that's what I kinda referenced, that, you know, I think 90 days, we should have something up and running. I won't say it's gonna be the kind of final version, but I do believe it'll be something that we can have in place so that as we get new development proposals in, we're in position to have those inspected once they go into construction. So that's, that's one piece of that overall permitting framework. There's the actual design standards and construction standards piece, the big thick book that I passed around. That's another piece of work that's, that's going on concurrently. I would anticipate having, having something in draft form, or 60 days or so after getting, getting that consultant onboard to kind of help us with that work. I will just let you know that that particular document will be very dynamic because we will have to tie the construction standards with the requirements of the new UDO. So as the new UDO is getting rewritten, or the term gets rewritten, and a new one being drafted on a parallel path, there's language just getting put in the UDO about street requirements and infrastructure requirements, and we have to make sure that the actual construction standards align. So just know that you, there, there can be, there will be changes, quite frankly, that will occur over the course of this year and a couple of months to ensure that we have a good set of construction standards that match what our UDO. And since both of them are currently being done on a parallel path, it's really gonna be iterative process between the two. Is that kind of clear?
Do you see that that document then comes back before us for approval? Or is that even a necessary step? Because, I mean, if you would've brought me a document that says, "We're gonna make people put trees in planting strips," okay, you're the experts, you wanna do that, knock yourselves out. Now, I'm gonna be a little upset, six months later, you come back and say, "That was a dumb idea."
Right, right.
I mean, again, from what we learned yesterday.
So I guess, go ahead.
I think it can be either or. I've seen, it can be either or, or a combination of the two. I've seen different models. I've seen some jurisdictions where construction standards and design details are handled completely at a staff level due to the technical nature of them all, and it's generally a little bit too in weeds for boards to try to get involved with. I've also seen in other jurisdictions where boards have a lot of interest in the pavement sections that are being built, and would love to be able to review that information before it gets changed. I would just offer that if, if efficiency from a customer service perspective is a goal, if it's a goal in a permitting process, there are more things that we take back for different levels of approval, kind of with the board, it's gonna introduce a time element. And so there can be something very specific of a technical nature on a set of construction standards that's creating a problem that's, that can be easily resolved, but if it needs to go on to a formal agenda, and an approval process could take potentially two to three months, then that, there could be some feedback from the development community that says, "Hey, from, from a permitting perspective, that's killing me on time. Why can't that just be handled at a staff level?" So that's a risk that I just would put out there if you choose to see it.
I was just gonna say, perhaps what would be helpful, not as a, just as a discussion, is for Dennis to kind of map out on a sheet, here's the timeline of things that are happening, what I anticipate needing the board's approval, et cetera. It's kind of hard to try to visualize everything, and then the questions that come and try to put this, put this into context.
And the other side of it is, what are you comf, I would lean towards as far as the real technical side of the house, being administered by staff, and then the board is approving these things that broadly at a UDO, kind of comp plan, that higher level. Yes, sir.
I, I see no overwhelming need, but we haven't looked at the funding of it, and how much it's gonna cost. We need to look into that. That's part of the assessment, because we need to figure out how we're gonna fund it. At this point, I would like to know where our permit costs are with every other municipality in the area. I think they're very high, because I think we've been funding, some of our general funds are permitting.
No, that is true.
Okay, so I think maybe some of that permitting costs should just be rolled back into infrastructure. And I don't know if we can afford that at this point, but we need to find that out.
Well, and part of, part of the overall comprehensive program is a, is part of the new schedule for things we're not charging fees for now. I don't know that our permitting costs are higher than what you would find, you know, the places, but the volume of what, well, you're exactly right, the volume of the permitting we're seeing is subsidizing some of the general funds, and the legislature, we can get into some of that. The legislature is saying you can't do that anymore. So that's, that's gonna be a hit of a couple hundred thousand dollars to us in the budget. But anyway, that's a different issue. Okay, but generally speaking, you're, you're in agreement that, yes, this area needs to be addressed. And, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but on the, on the technical side of things, you would be okay with staff, it's kind of like what Dennis described, when staff administers that side of the house, and the board approves at a higher level, or no? I mean, you wanna see the program itself, but, but when we put it together, but we need to have some direction in putting that together, or does the board want to approve everything from top to bottom like we did doing? I don't know what, for good, yeah, okay.
But I think it would be, at a certain point, it would be nice to get a briefing from you, from Dennis, on what is being accomplished there, so that if we go out and people ask us questions, we're well informed, we're all on the same page.
Bill, and ultimately, what will happen, it will, you know, it's kind of like building inspections. You don't get any updates on building inspections, that's a program we got up and running, it's properly funded, it's well-staffed, and it runs, and it's accomplishing what it needs to accomplish. It's not to say we don't report on it, I mean, we do report on building inspection activity, but that's where we would head with this program, it would just be just part of what we do. Right. Okay, so that was a big thing. And Dennis, I'm gonna keep hitting on you here. So the, the next thing was the, you know, we got into sedimentation and erosion control, so that's kind of the next installment, stormwater. There are some big decisions to be made there. Now, what we just talked about prior to that is more critical, more immediate, but do you want us to continue down the path of, I don't wanna say this. So if we wanna, we heard yesterday that, you know, Stormwater Management, they could come knocking on the door tomorrow and say, "Get your program going." And we don't have that in place. So I think that is the more critical of the two. But there has been some work done, and so we're a little bit ahead of the game on that one.
Who's they, and what, okay, and what's the...
There's a mandate that you have to have a stormwater management program, you could describe.
Yeah, so at a certain population size, when your town, certain population state usually issues those towns and cities a permit that comes with certain requirements, about six requirements, that aren't funded by the state, they're gonna be required to be funded locally, there are six requirements that we're eventually gonna have to do. The population threshold is 10,000, we currently exceed it, so my message is kind of, we're on borrowed time. I don't really have a good indication of when, you know, we get issued that permit, but the point, I think, is that, you know, we exceed the population minimum, and we know what the requirements will be. And I think the question on the table is, do we, do you as a board, not staff, to continue to explore the feasibility of, of kind of addressing that issue in what it would take, or focus our efforts other place?
So it's regardless of whether we provide utilities or not, water, electric, whatever, this is just, we have to do this. But the end result is, is they're going to be mandated, so...
How long has the mandate been in place?
So the, the rule, the mandate currently isn't in place for us, it's, it's, that's what I'm saying, it's pending.
I mean, with the state.
The law hasn't been in place, I think, since 93, I can get you, I can verify that date for you.
And we hit 10,000 probably.
We escaped on the last census.
Last census.
We were at nine something.
So 2020 would be the next. But they did an intermediate census, so we're gonna get here soon.
So our recommendation, we're gonna continue down the road of developing some form of recommendation, but then, so here, the most critical part of that is how you gonna pay for it. One of the most critical parts, and you've got two choices, you've got two or three choices. You've got, you can do a stormwater fee. That's typical, is what you see, it's based on impervious surface, I pay something on a residential basis, Lowe's Hardware, we can pay something different because they're, you know, so you've got that kind of format. Some folks just pay for it out of their general fund, they just, you know, they don't charge the fee. Some may do a combination of the two. So ultimately, that's a decision that, I think what you'll see the more progressive cities doing is a fee.
So, and it's the initial, and then it's ongoing maintenance, it's a never-ending deal then, you know, there's no mechanicals essentially to it, as far as, but there's pipes, there's things that break, add to additional, keep them clean.
And there's other elements, there's an education component, and, yeah, so there are...
Don't dump oil, 'cause it goes into the grid.
Education, there's a sediment root control requirement, so basically controlling site runoff, that's a piece of it, but yeah, it's, it's largely built around kind of education, cleanup, what's happening on site, and then it allows you to basically fix stormwater problems that may not be associated with that.
Would you please clarify, who pays the fee?
The homeowner, the property owner.
Every property owner?
Yes. And if you, there may be...
Developers.
Property owners.
So it's a tax?
So it's an ongoing thing.
Yeah, we call it a fee, but it's, it's a tax.
It's a tax.
It's a user fee.
Yeah, they call it a user fee, but, well, you can call it a tax, a user fee, or whatever, but it's, it's coming out of your pocket.
Developers continue to pay.
So, so, on a parallel path, the requirements typically put in place, stormwater side, permitting activity, which is the activity of developers. So requiring a pause, right, requiring, I think Brown mentioned that that's a, if that's a particular method, requiring different things around sediment and erosion control, so that's how you address the development. And then, you know, you have, you know, that gets created from non-active development activity.
So, and another, go ahead.
So by investigating, by feasibility study, by raising our heads, poking our nose, we suffer from the whack-a-mole possibility of the state going, "What are they, wait a minute, they don't even have a program," and then...
They know, I mean, they've got a list of who's on the, who's not. I mean, they, they know that we don't have a program, but their, their funding is so, they'll get to us.
The state already projected in 2012 a population of 12,000. The interim census will probably give them something official, that if they wanted to come after us, they could.
When's the interim, when's the...
It was done in 2015.
Okay, how long ago did that project, that, or something?
We haven't seen anything yet. Is it reasonable to expect that you, as part of the budget process that's coming up, that you would come back with some recommendations on how it could be done?
Oh, sure.
And the impact?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, is that a place to start?
Yeah, yeah. We won't be ready to adopt a program, but yeah, absolutely.
But just so we can see the impact.
Yeah, well, that's, we'll have a good feel. And we can show you what some other folks in our area are doing.
You said the next census is 2020.
The next official one.
Every 10 years.
But they could live...
Well, the state has their own population estimates that they update every year.
Right, but if they get anything sniffing out of the interim, they could make that, you're definitely open.
I think we'd be a lot more jeopardy if we were a town of 25 or 30,000 that didn't have one in place, so...
You had one in Hickory.
Yes, but we did not do a fee. We did it out, we did 50% general fund, 50% out of the water and sewer fund. And we justified it by saying the water quality side is the water sewer fund, the water quantity side is the general fund. So we, so we just, we did it 50/50. And we had a, we did a task force and loaded it up with developers, and so they didn't want a fee. So that was about what we were left with.
Yeah, when I lived in Charlotte, I think it was like $3 to $7 a month.
Yeah.
You just put on your facilities.
They paid you water, you had to pay for water, and you had to pay for it to leave.
Yeah.
And then what comes from the sky, you had to pay for it.
So that, so that'll be a good policy, but how do you wanna fund it? And then the other policy decision related to this, Charlotte, Dennis can speak to this better than I can, but they have an aggressive program, where they, they go on private property and do all this stuff. I wouldn't recommend that, 'cause once you start stepping on somebody else's property and you're owning their problems, and staying on public property and public right-of-way, I mean, that, again, that is a policy-level decision, but the thought of us going in people's backyards and fixing, and I may be exaggerating a little bit, but they've got a real, Charlotte's got one of the most aggressive programs in the state. And that's just the way they set it up, that's how they decided to do it.
This is gonna include another employee, I guess, too, where is Dennis and his assistant?
Well, when you look at, when you look at Holly Springs, and Morrisville, and some of these others, and wonder why they have so many in the engineering department, then this starts telling the story of why that's true, why that's so, but, so there will be some staff time associated with this in some form or fashion. 'Cause there's also an inspection part of it, we go out and inspect the stormwater retention ponds and all that, so, so we do get on private property from that perspective.
But you can also find people when they're not setting their fence up and all that.
Yes, sir.
We have a estimate of how much of this would produce the documentation to do this, because you have a booklet, right?
Yeah.
And how much do you think it would be to get...
A subcontractor, I guess we're gonna have a subcontractor produce that for us, right?
So a feasibility study is more or less already been generated.
Right.
It's in draft form, so I think what'd be helpful is maybe after that gets finalized, to send it out to you all so you can view it. I might have you out there.
Is that the one you referred to yesterday?
What I'm talking about is what we do to fix the problems. You showed booklets yesterday, were those just of engineering, or were those of sediment and erosion control, or water control?
So those were all of the construction standards around each one of the...
Okay, and how much is it, because your staff document, so is that, those are bigger than your UDO booklet?
Or, yeah, I can get you that information.
Were you guessing here, it would be less than 50 grand, or?
Yeah, I don't know if it's an hour, it can be less than an hour.
Just as a point of fact, there are a couple of the jurisdictions I'm aware of that were facing a real sleeping giant in this whole conversation, which is the Corps of Engineers, who have jurisdiction over all waters of the United States. And they were facing billions of dollars in cleanup that they could have prevented. And that, you know, if the Corps of Engineers comes down here and the stream is messy, you gotta clean it up. And that's not a cheap thing to do. And you go into that stream very carefully. And I've had to do it on one job in Richmond, you had to take it out by hand, and clean the whole stream.
Well, so when we talk about our vision, mission, values, you know, we talk about, you know, financial stewardship, environmental stewardship, stewardship of our infrastructure, that's, that's what that, this is what that means, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna take care of it.
So what action you think you're gonna take on that?
Um, as far as...
Do you have what you need?
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep pieces, Dennis has got the, the report that was done by City M. Smith, I think, and...
That was 2012?
I think it was 2015.
15, it hasn't been working since 2012.
So we'll take that as kind of a baseline, and then work from there, and then bring things back to the board as we move along, not to get ahead of ourselves. Okay. And then the last one I wanted to hit on was the transportation plan, or transportation master plan, as far as, we talked about that yesterday. As far as direction, do we need anything from the board on that?
Not right now.
Contact.
Well, we gave direction that we're gonna focus in on, consolidate, get rid of the five, down to...
Wait, one, yeah, we just, the Waxaw booklet.
Yeah, the CRTPO as the master.
But as far as a broader townwide...
Not, not, not right now. They'll, they'll seize the board, they'll seize up in, you know, kind of several months, but not now.
All right, so let's, we're gonna slide, anything else that we missed? Okay, so we're gonna move over to the money, financial side of the house, and projects, and, but I'll start out, what I was gonna hit on yesterday was the national economy, just, I sit in some, and space behind me in the local economy. Mayor and I went to an Economic Groundhog Day event in Monroe a couple weeks ago, and I heard a lot about what was going on, particularly the economy in the southeast, is going well. You wanna, you're, okay, so the South is getting 40% of all the job creation that's occurring in the, in the country, something?
40% of, I mean, we got a demographic shift down here, which we caught from the COTG. We get 40% of the economic infusion, the, the rub is the consumer spending is starting to decline, and, you know, how, what can we get done before the anticipated, you know, flattening out of that, at what, 2017, 2018?
Well, 2018's the number, you know, who knows? It could be, you know, nobody saw the 2008, 2000 recession coming forward. So the message, the overall, the Charlotte metro area is in really good shape. And even, and of course, I think everybody was here during the last downturn, and it weathered, I think this region weathered the recession, came out of it, as far as North Carolina goes, quicker than, quicker than most. But what we're hearing is, you know, there's probably a couple more, I mean, this, the economy's just, the expansion cycle's cyclical, and so every X number of years, you could expect. And the number that I'm hearing, not that I know anything, or the people that I hear, listen to know anything, was 2018, so we've got a couple more. That's, that was, that's, that, in my mind, was why it was so important to get, not to rush through it, but to tackle the comp plan like the board did, tackle the UDO, because we felt like those were hickories to economic development in Waxaw. And we've got, the window will close on this economic expansion, but the good news is, you know, after we get through the next recession, it'll open up again, and we'll be ready to go with new policies and plans that are hopefully more business, business-friendly. But we have been working to try to get specifically those two things done, to modernize our land use program, and, and put us in a position to, to be more competitive in the region.
The other interesting thing about what came out of there is, given our demographic, the younger population, they have no problem driving to go get their stuff. And to the... And to the extent that we create our vision and create that uniqueness of Waxall, that'll keep them here. But they, they don't have any problem hopping in the car and driving and going five, seven, 10 miles to get, get stuff. So, our competitive posture is not just a one mile, a two mile radius, given our demographic. And so we have to be cognizant of that, create not a me-too, but a uniqueness that keeps them here.
That's Generation X, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not millennials, they like to stay home.
Well, we don't have millennials just yet. I mean, we speak of.
We have someone staffed.
Well, Kayla on staff.
You're a millennial.
Yes, sir. She just looks like a millennial.
She looks like a millennial.
You're a millennial. Yeah, so Kelly's a millennial. Okay, so, so we've been working, you know, to try to, to try to beat the trend, so to speak, as far as the, we need money to do the things we want to do. I mean, this is what's like selling our wife, we need money. But we need money to do the things that we want to do for the community and a lot of the major capital projects. And there's, I think there's a perception, maybe in the community, that we've got enough money to do everything we need to do. That's, that's just not true. We've got, we've got, we are doing better than 90 some odd percent of the rest of the country. That is absolutely true, in terms of our growth and, and I'm making an assumption that folks think growth is a good thing. So, I also hear that growth may not be a good thing. So, that is, the direction that I have gotten from the board is pro-growth, pro-business. That's not to say, now, I tell the joke, you know, we don't want a truck stop and trailer park on every corner, but it's gotta be a high level, a certain type of quality, and that's what's going to be the trade-off in the UDO. You're gonna see more use by right, but the look has got to be better. So that's, that's the whole, that's what came out of the comp plan. So, again, that's, that's where I'm going forward with what I'm, with what I'm seeing coming out of these public processes and what I'm hearing from the board and the policy. So, if what I'm saying is different than where we are now, we need to talk about that. But, but until then, we're going forward in a pro-growth sort of mode. Any comments, disagreement? Okay, right. Right, so.
I have comments.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm in agreement with, I mean, I'm pro-growth. But I think in, in some instances, we need to pull back on the reins and slow down a little bit, be a little more careful what we allow, what kind of growth, and how fast we're doing it.
And I guess, so, I guess specifically what, I mean, I can think of some types of growth I would want to see, but, I mean, are there, we're seeing a tremendous amount of residential, seeing a tremendous amount of really higher-end residential. Of course, we got, now we've got, now the apartments coming, which is a different sort of something we haven't had in Waxall before.
Well, most of our growth, I mean, if you drive down Providence, they're, they're little tiny businesses that aren't really bringing real salaries to people that could have jobs here.
Yeah. So, so, so the type, so I guess from that, so that's what we've talked about, diversifying the property tax base, providing more employment opportunities in Waxall for folks to live and work in Waxall, so we don't clog 16 up going to Charlotte every day. But is there any type of growth that we really, you know, we said pull the reins back, is it the volume just in general? Is it like Millbridge, I think, we looked at Millbridge yesterday, they're, they're 600 homes into a 2,000-home development. And, I mean, they've, they've had their plans approved and all that, so they're coming. So I'm not much of a fan about that, but, so, well, that's a good, so what type, what types of growth does give you pause or concern?
It's not necessarily types, to me, it's the amount. So, we just had, we just had in front of us a, a gas station that felt no problem going across the street from another gas station.
Right.
And I get that, you know, in Charlotte, they're on every corner.
Right.
But, so that would make five, six, do we do seven, eight, nine, 10? As we said, well, capital, or capitalism will say where that's at.
The market will decide.
Right, the market will decide. But, okay, so somebody, you know, thinks, well, I'm better than this one, so we get seven, and then I'm better than that one, then we get eight, and then we start getting empty boxes because we can't support eight gas stations.
And then you gotta mess up the down 16 with vacant properties and, and I guess, so with the new UDO, so how would y'all like for that, and I will get into the capitalism, but from the UDO perspective, how would you like for that to be addressed? So you want to control certain types of, of growth, or certain types of projects?
Well.
Or have more input?
Yeah.
Which is nothing, there's nothing wrong with that.
More input.
Well, I mean, and more specifically, what the mechanism is for that? To not have to say, we like your concept with the red awnings, but we don't like your concept with the future used car lot. I mean, you know, what's the actual lever there that says it works or it doesn't work, or does it just fall upon us to raise our hand up and down every time, on each individual project?
How would you like to control that?
I can say that raising your hand up in every town, it just kills development. I mean, that's an extra three months to go through or more. They control the drive-throughs by having a certain amount of footage between each drive-through. So, maybe we could do that by different types of businesses, to control them. So maybe, say, gas stations or something that people have a skew about. Car lots, some people have a skew about car lots. So, I don't know if that's, you know.
So let me ask the question, because if you, so take 16, if you really look at the Highway 16 corridor plan, that starts to control the types of things that we want. Maybe not where everybody is, but, but it's not reflected in the UDO whatsoever, which was really the problem with the last gas station. I mean, we had multiple variations of what you could do depending on what you read and how you interpreted it. And Chaplin had four sides to that argument, which was pretty interesting. I mean, that's where we are. So is, is there any one document that we have that's really articulates what we want?
My estimation right now, no, that's in several places.
Do we, do we go through the exercise of pulling that out now?
Absolutely. And I think, and I think one of, one of the things that's incumbent on this group, on everybody, is to raise the questions, just like Brendan did and John's comment. You know, the, the old UDO, there's some things in there that are worth saving, but we have to identify them and we want to incorporate them into the new document. And Paul, I've thought about the same thing myself. Gas stations, do we go back to that fast food restaurant rule? We have to devise a way in the new document to have that document give us what we want. And to Warren's point, it's going to be less board involvement, but the UDO is going to have to be far firmer and self-selecting and concentrate on the form of what we want. So that's how developers will come here, they will read the rules, the rules are going to be tough, they're going to be what we want. And we have to, you have to articulate what you want, even if it's just a question. Because then Dennis can make sure that that's incorporated in the new document.
I mean, kind of several observations on, on this topic. And it's, it's why I asked the question yesterday and maybe made a statement about what's economic development to people, what's pro-business to people. And these are, these are, these are very broad terms that have, in my opinion, have very, very different meanings to individual people once you start drilling down. Because a lot of what I'm hearing right now is a desire for use control. But a lot of what I've heard up until this point in different conversations is, well, form-based code, that's where we want to go. But right now, we're talking about use control, gas stations, fast food restaurants. We don't like those, those are uses. And so, there, there aren't economics behind those uses. I'm not lobbying for any uses, I'm just saying that when we talk about things like diversifying a tax base, well, a, quite frankly, McDonald's is taxed at a certain rate that's, that's probably higher than a single-family home in terms of the recapture. Now, we may not like things like drive-throughs and the lighting and some architectural features, which that starts to get into control in the design or the form. But a lot of what we're talking about right now, I just want to make sure all clear on that, is the use control. And so, if that's really the primary interest is to control use, then this is a very good time for us to start raising our hands, so that I can get on the horn with the consultants who thinking that they're going down a more form-based path, to say that that's really not the path that we're going down anymore.
But I think, I think what you're hearing is, every, folks are good with the form-based code, but it's not going to be a pure, there's going to be some things that we need to take a special look at.
Well, I, I mean, not to debate it, I'm, I'm hearing a lot more use-based than I am form-based.
I think there's a couple of problems. One is, I know that at the planning board, we were very involved in choosing the consultants, which meant we had to do a lot of research and we had a lot of education on the difference between form-based and use-based and hybrids and what they produce. I don't think that the same amount of effort that was put into educating the planning board and educating the public has been put into educating this board. Because I think all your questions, Jim, everybody's questions are very legitimate. And, that's why I said the other day, I don't know that the directions come from this board yet on what you really want, but I think before you can say what you really want, you have to know what's in a code. What does a code do? What is the form-based code? What is a use code? What's a hybrid? How, the scale? How far do you go? And until this board get, is given that information, that learning, I don't see how you produce.
I mean, do you feel the job are up to speed on?
I was very involved with form-based codes. I understand and I read it all of it, probably five times. And I'm not a real fan of it in certain areas, but, for instance, NMX, there's probably, what, 200 uses under NMX?
Yeah, sure, certainly.
And, and I can see that being maybe compartmentalized in different, in NMX, with this mini under for this section, as far as the land use, and then another section and another section. You know, that, in my mind, it's just 200 uses for NMX, and, and there you go.
Right.
You know, I'm not in agreement with, with that one particular, and I'm sure there's, there's other areas as well.
And you're right. And at, at the time the form-based code was promulgated, it was almost as if everybody gave up on form-based code and they were offered a choice. Do you want to go form-based or you might have six uses that are restricted? You know, nobody wants an adult bookstore, nobody wants a drive-in, you know, drive-in movie theater. And then the rest is form-based and the board at that time couldn't quite get away from uses. Instead of having 500, they've got 200.
Well, I don't know, that has to be, you have to be a form-based purist or, you know, or something completely different.
I think what I heard Brenda say, or at least what I took from what Brenda said, is it then becomes more of an economic development question on the larger scale. Dennis talked about the consultants, I mean, they can bring us Wendy's and Chick-fil-A's and all that all day long, but is that improving the pay scale, the job quality, like in Telechart that we had courted and gave taxes them to? That brought jobs to Waxall, 60 to $100,000 paying jobs, and a lot of them. And, you know, how can we focus on courting those companies, the tech companies, those type businesses to come to Waxall versus, again, we can get Wendy's all day long, can't apparently get better jobs, like everybody wants, but.
My original question is, are we pro-growth? And I, it wasn't economic development, it wasn't retail, you know, so, and that's, that is extremely wrong. I mean, it's population growth, well, that's, that's probably what I hear more than, than anything, is just, you know, the last person leaves in, they want to slam the door behind and they don't want anybody else coming.
And to your point, are we, I mean, I don't know if it's really the question. We're going to grow.
We're going to grow.
We can go get that fence over there from Ace and throw it across 16 and only open it a couple of times a day and see how that works out for us, but that's not.
But it gets into a, kind of an interesting question. You started down on an economic development side. We don't have anything to offer to any of those companies. We have to go develop that. Is that what we want? That's why you're talking with Kirk to come up with an economic development plan. I mean, Chris Plata has been very candid, we don't have any thing to offer to those guys.
What would we offer to Telechart?
Huh? We don't, we don't have the property and the skill base to, to bring them here. They're all going into Charlotte.
Right.
We don't, we don't have the education backing to bring in a technology company. That's why they went to Monroe and they're tied with South Piedmont Community College. It starts to create a ripple effect. If we wanted to tie some of these things.
I'd say utilities as well.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you can look at a lot of larger municipalities and for all the fancy things people say and cities say that they do for economic development, when you start looking at where the money starts to go, infrastructure happens to be a pretty big one, especially in North Carolina, because the laws are set up that way, where, you know, you can, you can really court folks, you can recruit them, but there's a couple of things you can do on the money side that can help get them there, and that's through utilities and infrastructure and also some things with taxes and kind of repayments of taxes, if you put it that way.
We would extend water sewer lines to an area and then growth would, almost automatically. I mean, you can control growth where it happens with your, we don't have water sewer, I mean, the county's got it. So we have to look at other.
So then I guess my answer to your question would be, then prepare us or bring us what it would take to make that happen.
Okay.
Would be my thoughts, to, to control growth. Because again, I, I don't think that Wendy's or Chick-fil-A or anything really care about all that stuff to some degree.
So, so it's got.
Those, those follow the residential.
Rooftops.
Rooftops.
Right.
Fast food, gas station, they all follow the people. They don't follow business.
So that's going to be the growth that comes to us by nature, according to you, right?
Why do we want to restrict residential comforts against fast foods, gas line, we, we go around the corner, buy gas or we buy food. Why do we want to restrict those people? I mean, they need to be where the people are.
Right. But I guess then, my thing that keep, in my head when we read the surveys and stuff, I moved to Waxall because it was not Charlotte. I moved to Waxall because it was not wherever I came from. But if we bring everything from where they came from here, then we're no longer that or what they left.
But they still drive there.
The harsh reality is 60% of them are driving into Charlotte every day.
Right, well, I know, I do it every day.
So I look, so I think of it from growth. So we've got, we've got residential growth that's going to continue, and it's going to be predominantly single-family residential, but we're also going to have, we're going to, we haven't, I don't have people asking about it, but we're going to see more apartments, apartment unit sports over there too, that's, that's coming. So, we're going to have more retail. You know, Kirk, he's going to come forward at your next meeting and he's going to show what Buxton came back with and, you know, we're good markets for Hobby Lobby, Mar, Ross Sports Authority, Chipotle. I mean, we are a good market for a number of resident, or a number of commercial retail outlets that.
Our current UDO might as have a 62,000 and bigger. So, I mean, we need to fix that, because that is so restrictive, you can't get a target here. You can't get even a large CVS here because it's restrictive.
And the, the, that sort of retail is not economic development. I mean, it does offer jobs, it offers taxes, but really, it's what Jim said, it's, it's a quality of life, it's, I've got to go, my son plays football, I got to go to Pineville or somewhere to buy mouthpiece. So, this, so if I can buy, if I go to Sports Authority in Waxall and buy a mouthpiece, then good for me.
Don't we get to recoup some of those sales taxes?
Yes.
Yeah, the sales tax would stay back in.
Right, and so, I mean, and that's why, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to really debate it, that's why I think when we say economic development is so broad. Some people think it's just job creation. I think others would argue that diversified tax basis is a form of economic development, because when you have a certain amount of commercial real estate, it starts to subsidize the residential side, and you can have a potential to hold those taxes lower.
Yeah, I think on that point though, Dennis, I think where, where we're doing the job growth, that's where we got to work with the county to get help.
Sure.
Because that gets to the infrastructure and all that stuff. On the retail side that follows the rooftops, what you get is economic development, that's all on us. I mean, by and large.
And what the county will tell you is that they do not, they do not get involved with retail, as far as the economic development side of it, they don't get involved in retail, they really don't get involved with the office, they are manufacturing.
Right.
They're industry towards.
Technology.
Yeah, techno, yeah, technology.
I think, I've heard so many people and talked to so many people and. I think I've heard so many people and talked to so many people and the word unique and, and all of these old things. So are we talking about one Waxall or are we talking about downtown is Waxall that needs to be unique? Or do we start at Ray Road?
But I, I don't think that, you know, the, I mean, this is your, but I don't think the Hobby Lobby or Sports Authority would be a good fit for downtown. I mean, I think downtown is unique and it does, that is something extremely unique that we have to this region that we need to nurture and improve. But I don't see, I, I wouldn't want to see, you know, fast food joints popping up.
I wouldn't either.
I mean, so.
But, but in that same note, how many do you want to see up 16, which is just a four-mile stretch?
And it's, and so there's a philosophical question, you know, the other side of that is, is that, is that decision best made by the market? But in the, but, but if it does come to Waxall, if we have one of these, it's going to look this way, this is how it's going to look, it's going to be the best-looking gas station in, on the eastern seaboard or whatever. So it's about the quality of the development. So to me, there could be some trade-off and some, you know, give and take and you could come up with a good, I mean, there, there are good-looking gas stations, I mean, as far as gas station goes, but no, I wouldn't want a lot up and down 16.
And to Brenda's point though too, this, that starts to beg the question, vision-wise, when do we start a Waxall Parkway? When do we start on the, start on the south end and start partnering with the county in terms of water? I mean, those are big-ticket items.
And let me give you the, let me give you the, the bottom line on the degree to which really this is not an issue right now. So we're, we're on course to do 250 single-family residential permits. We'll probably do 10 others that aren't. So we're not taught, we're not, we're not getting inundated with gas stations, fast food joints. Now, I'm not saying that's not coming, but we're not seeing that.
I thought those were too restrictive.
Well, so, and that, and I think it was, and that's what I said along.
That is put in place for a reason because you have, it's all conditional use. So you have to go in front of the planning board, you have to go in front of the board and it's down to the last night that you get that vote and you have to tie your money up as a commercial person that whole time.
And we've said, we want to move away from that. Now, we've said this, but if we don't, or if we want, if we want to put some, you know, restrictors in there to where we're not going to get certain types of things, that's a great conversation. We need the consultants in here to sit down and say, you know, this is our vision, this is what you need to accomplish. This is absolutely complete policy-level stuff that the board needs to decide.
I don't think either Brenda or John has said anything that is restrictive moratoria type.
Right.
It's just what you're saying, Steve, what's the vision? And it's incumbent upon us to translate the vision into the comprehensive plan and into the UDO. And all of the concerns that you have or concerns that I have or concerns that Paul has and concerns of Jim and John, everybody has. And we, we need to make sure that they are reflected in those documents and that those documents are structured in such a way that they produce the results, they, what we want, that, that they produce the vision that we.
So we have an opportunity with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Because we have a draft.
Right.
Primarily in the land use part of it more than any, that's probably the biggest part, right Dennis?
Probably so. I mean, there's a decent amount about economic development that's stated in there, but yeah, I think the land use being the biggest.
That's got to portray our vision because that covers the full 12 square miles.
Yes. Dennis has proposed yesterday to consolidate the map and all the things I've ever participated in, that's the first step for a comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't do that, what are you comprehending? And that wasn't done. So now we're doing it. So now we start with that, we finish the cop plan, we do the UDO, that begins to reflect.
So Dennis made a good point. So I think it'd be a good idea for Studio Cascade to come in and, they need to hear this.
Yes.
That this, because we don't want to build a car you're not going to buy. I mean, it's got to reflect exactly, you know, what the board's wishes are. And so we need, so is that direction that I'm getting from the board that you would like to sit down with the Studio Cascade folks and give them some feedback? And I think, I think a basic educational session will just remind everybody, this is form-based code, these are the different types of zoning land use plans that are out there.
I think it's more important to just a couple hours, I think we should have a work session on it and I think should get a whole day there. This is not important.
I think, I think a whole day, half day would be more reasonable.
So we'll, we'll work with Studio Cascade and we'll get something, we'll get something set up. Is that, okay, so there's, good, that's good. All right, this is the way it's supposed to work. The, you know, what I, this kind of conversation started out by, we don't have enough money. Then diversifying the property tax base has been something we've talked about, getting the high-value, low-cost-to-serv development. The good news on the residential development that we have been getting, which is the most expensive to service, it is the type of residential, the value is such that it pays for itself. So that, that's good. So early on, you know, in trying to, you know, turn over every rock to not leave anything to, um, um, research, we looked at the special census early on, remember that? We talked about, we felt like Waxall's population was closer to 15,000 versus the 12,000 that the census had us at and if we were, if we had a special census done, we could potentially tap into more sales tax revenue because the state was talking about changing the sales tax formula at the time. So all that kind of played together. Well, it turned out the, the state didn't go as far with sales taxes they originally anticipated, so it didn't make sense to pursue the special census. So that was just, that was one of the things that we were trying to pursue. And we talked about the new future land use plan, new, new UDO, incentivizing voluntary, another option or another area we have looked at to increase revenues, incentivizing voluntary, voluntarily annex their property into Waxall that are developing on the fringe otherwise. We looked at Kensington Cove yesterday across from Kensington Elementary School. That is development that's going in outside the town limits, but basically it's going to be surrounded by the town limits. And that's, the, the state has changed the annexation laws, we can't, we can't annex, we can't do involuntary annexations anymore, but we're working with Trayton Homes on another one. And that's going to be about $40 million in tax base. So again, we're trying to squeeze all the blood out of the tournament that we can to produce revenue, to do the things that we need to do.
Warren, just, and this will come up more in the latest, latest side, but no intention to go after the, any, any change of the sales tax this year, but probably next year. So kind of along the lines of Dennis putting things, when do they, when do we have to start thinking about it? We will have to start, probably have to start thinking about it because they plan to bring that back.
Sales tax?
The sales tax thing. They don't want to go into this election year, but for the next two-year cycle, they plan to do it.
So they, what, what you're going to see, they, they have broadened the base on sales tax and so that's effective more first, but they're going to go even further.
They want to go further, yes.
Okay. Because the governor has told folks to back off anything.
Back off anything this year.
Yeah. With the bond referendum coming up. So we're, we're looking at incentivizing voluntary annexations and getting folks to voluntarily annex. The one area that we can do the most work and good there is offer density that the county can't, can't offer to developers. I mean, the more density we give folks, the more money they can make and that's how we send it for them to annex.
Let me ask one question. Years ago, I understood that that county was recommending, why don't you go talk to Waxall before you come into county? What happened there? That's my question. I, I know you don't know an answer, nobody probably knows.
Well, I can tell you in some cases they did. I can tell you in some cases they did come talk to the county and didn't like what they heard. Uh, you know, I think all, I think, I know of two of the, two developments going on outside the town limits right now that aren't going to annex did come in and talk and didn't like the answers that they got. Because it was this two-acre lot, you, you know, we'll, we'll do the two-acre lot, then you'll come back and ask for something and they just want more. They will, they want more surety specificity upfront on what they're going to be able to get before they voluntarily annex. But they, what they did, they went to the county and the county said, the county gave them the density that they wanted on their project to make their numbers work. And that's what we're, Kensington Cove was a perfect example that we drove by yesterday. So that's the sort of thing. So some of, some of what we're trying to fix is the, internally the way we do business. Not only our plans and policies, but internally how we communicate to people.
But what we drove through at Kirton yesterday, I mean, hell, we can't give them any more than that in the apartments.
Yeah.
They're on top of each other in the streets of this lot. What more could they want?
Was it a different time?
Yeah, yeah. Well, Kirton came in.
Narrow streets too.
Yeah. I mean, those, that, those narrow streets, they create obstacles, you know, that, that goes beyond, that doesn't have anything to do with density. We could, we could get, you can give somebody density and make them have wide streets at the same time. So.
I mean, but the houses are on top of each other too. I mean, six feet apart, that's, that's.
What density is.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Back yard and front yard.
Any more close and then it's.
Prescott, Prescott was negotiated, hey, give us a park and trails and we'll give you the density you want. I mean, that's, it was, it's all, it was all negotiation and then a conditional use plan.
Yes, I were working with a, a big developer now that was to come in and do the types of houses we haven't seen in Waxall, very expensive houses. And we said, we can give you, we can give you the density you want, but you're going to connect the road system, we're going to connect with the backside, we're going to have connectivity through the, through the development in exchange for some, in exchange for recommending some density. So, yeah, there are things that you do try to, you know, so it's a win-win for everybody. So they were satisfied with that. But the, we're pursuing grant opportunities. Downtown was a big one that we, that we just landed, so that's, that, that gives us some revenue to do some, to implement some of our projects. And we talked about the work that we're doing with Buxton and on the retail side. And again, Kirk's going to come back at your next regular meeting and do a presentation. There's some pretty interesting stuff that came out of that. So that's, that'll be, that'll be coming forward. So I guess the message there before we get into really the budget, the capital side of the house is we are doing everything we can to produce as much revenue without raising taxes and fees, trying to squeeze every drop out of the turnip we can because we need that to do, to do a lot of the projects that, that we want our government to be doing. Let's see, Kirk, or can you get this? Well, to, to bend the, kind of setting the five years CIP, so I did a presentation early on to the board, made it part of the budget development process, but really looking at capital from three different perspectives. This is, this is the oper, this $5,000 to $200,000, that's the operational perspective. That's replacing vehicles, facility improvements. That's really built in annually as part of the, these types of things, as part of the annual ongoing budget. Then you get this next, this next, next range, this $200,000 to, to a million dollar, those are, think of those as smaller neighborhood parks, maybe signalizing an intersection. So you start getting, obviously, the funding gets to be tougher as you move down the line here. Then you've got the major, the major capital, which is the new buildings and new parks, larger roadway improvements, that sort of thing, a million dollars and above. So, um, let's see. All right, so unassigned, unassigned fund balance. So to close FY 1314, the town had, which was the last fiscal year, we had $6.3 million in your unassigned fund. That's, unassigned fund balance is your, think of it as your savings account that you might have at home. That's, if you wanted to go, if you had $15,000 in there and you wanted to go buy a car, I mean, that, that's, it's not obligated for anything else. That's, that's the board's, there's no earmarks on that, there's no statutory limitations on any of that. That's the amount of money you have, had available. Remember we did, we set aside money for Kensington Drive and the YMCA property purchase and the first phase of the, of the YMCA Park, Town of Waxall Park Development. So, so we ate into that a little bit, so we're down to, down to $4 million, which was 42% fund balance.
Point of clarification, did you do the, set aside the whole?
Yeah.
Phase of the Y or just the first year?
First year.
Okay.
First year. Yeah, so $1.3 million for the 13-acre purchase and $350,000 set aside for the first phase of the park development. So then, so we got two more $350,000 coming. And there you go. So your goal was to maintain an undesignated fund balance of about 58%, which is equivalent to about seven months general operating. So if, if the well went dry and we didn't get any other revenue anywhere else, you want to have enough money in place to carry you for seven months. I'm sorry, Jim, I'll be right back.
That's the goal versus what's the statutory?
It's 8%. 8%, 8% is one month. And if you get down to 8%, you get, you start getting nasty letters from the state. So you don't want to be, most cities our size, it's going to be 50, 60, 70%.
It won't be, LGC start taking a look like at about 20 to 25%?
No, when you get, no, the, if, if you, if you have, it depends on how quickly you've dropped. If you've gone from 50 down to 15, then they're going to start paying attention. But 8% is a trigger, absolutely.
When they have to.
And they have to.
Yeah.
And they can, yeah, they'll, they'll, they will make you start doing things, they will make you raise your property tax rate if they see fit to, to increase your fund balance.
But, so then is there a trick to the fact though that we have at 1.71%, but we can still go out and incur debt?
Uh, but yeah, they don't, this is still to them, this is a very healthy number.
Right.
You can, you can, no, meaning if you have a whole bunch of money in the bank, why aren't you spending that before you?
Right.
They don't, they don't think at it that way.
They don't care.
They'd say that's the, that's the town's decision. If you were down to 8% and want to go borrow money, they'd probably say no. And they say you need to take care of your 8% fund balance and get it built back up and then come see us.
Through them?
Yeah.
Through the LG?
Yeah.
We could go to Joe's first national bank.
No, they have to.
They have to borrow.
They have to approve all borrowing.
Regardless of it's through them or not.
All right, everything flows, everything, all the borrowing that we do is through, is through a private bank, but it all has to be approved by the local government commission. Yeah, that's a good question. So the message, the good news is, is that as, we are in a growth mode, the town is growing, revenues are coming in, we will build this $4 million. And I'll show you a slide, um, let me do a better job on that slide. And you can see, and you can't see. So this is 2007, 2008, 2014, 15. Even during the recession, Waxall was putting money in the bank. I mean, that's just phenomenal. But you, even during the recession, this is going the other way for almost every other town in the country. Meaning people were eating into their fund balance to keep things going. You were, you were, your fund balance was increasing all the way through the recession. Then you started making some, this is a normal sort of thing. Then you started making some investments in some property purchases, we got Kensington Drive, we got the YMCA. So that's, that's pretty normal. This, this is going to do that over time. So the fact that you were increasing during, during the recession to that degree is just, is amazing to me. But, um, so we'll, we'll be in a mode where we're going to start, we're still going to tap into fund balance from time to time because you are, the way, the way a lot of towns use their fund balance is almost like a capital reserve. You're using that to fund capital, you're using that to, as long as you're in a growth mode and able to, and you're able to do that. You don't want your fund balance to get up to 150% and then people start saying, well, why do you have such a huge fund balance? Why don't you cut by taxes? And so you start getting those sorts of comments. So a lot of towns will use their fund balance as a capital reserve mechanism to fund their capital needs. All right, so, so here, before we get into capital funding, we talked about this, every year in the general, your general fund, you're going to spend between $600,000 and $800,000 on replacing equipment, maintaining facilities. It could be anything from office equipment to police vehicles to police radios, public services equipment that needs to be replaced or new equipment that needs to be purchased like Toddles to buy what's called a one-armed bandit. So when they go out and do leaf removal, it can just be a one-man show or some, so there are certain types of capital every year that's pretty much just kind of, I call it cooked into the cake. I mean, you, you can expect between $600,000 and $800,000 in your general fund to budget in your, in your annual budget. Then you get into this next set, this next level, this mid-range level of capital. This year you started setting aside $200,000 a year to start funding, to start really establishing a capital reserve so you don't have to rely as much on your general fund. And ideally, we can, we will incrementally increase this every year and get up to a $500,000 amount every, so you have about $500, $500,000 to do, you know, a pocket park, a signalized intersection or whatever type of project that you wanted to do. And as we continue to grow, you could continue to increase your allocation to a capital reserve. That number could be a million dollars after, you know, five years. Then you have a lot of money to work with as long as we stay in a growth mode economically.
So that, that right there though is probably your answer to the other slide of why we kept putting money in. I mean, we weren't in position during that time, but their cake was a pancake the whole time. They never had a cake that had anything in it.
Yeah.
And they kept it that way eventually. I mean, again, chief was here, you know, the departments, you know, patrol cars, stuff kind of just.
There's, there's some catch-up that we had to, had to do. Yeah, I think it, yeah, that may have been the, and I wasn't here, so I don't know, but I do know that when I got here, one of the things we needed to address was the chief's fleet in terms of his vehicles getting those, getting on a regular routine. So if some of those things weren't being done, that could be a reason why the, why the fund balance continued to grow. But we, in the next few years, couple of years, we hope to get this number up to about a half a million dollars. And really, truthful, every year, if every year that we're able, we ought to be putting more money into a capital reserve. I mean, this, this should continue to grow beyond $500,000 if we're able to do that. It's like at home, you don't want to, you know, every time you get a raise, you don't, ideally, you want to put some of it in the bank.